Go. Go. It's time to wake up. 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 At the break of dawn in the sun again, better get ready to climb back on the land. Come on, man, shake the dust off the pool. Don't yawn and prolong what you got to do. And if you've been going through any negative phase, well, here's your opportunity for turning a page. Today's a new chapter, right to right, and make it end with the win. Give it all you got. But first, you gotta rise with alert and a laugh, pick the dirt from your eyes, then work on the prize. It's done, because we ain't even trying to lose. Let's go, man, don't forget snooze, it's time to wake up. 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 Tick tock, tick tock, let's go. Tick tock, tick tock. You can't wait around for someone to prove it. Now is the moment to begin your renewal, man. Feel alive with the vibe energized of the folks who you're coming by the white in your eyes. Hey, another day might waste away. Come on, let's get it going, don't make delays. So bring me along and lift your arm high like Georgia, we'll get a piece of the pie. Begin it with a step, you'll get in it in a second, you're running like you never did it when you overslept. So right this minute, get right with it. What time is it? It's time to wake up.
Good morning, Birmingham. This is the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, November 5th, 2024. This morning, our invocation will be delivered by Darren L. Kenimer, Chief Chaplain Services for the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs, Birmingham VA Healthcare System. And our pledge of allegiance will be led by Council President Daryl O'Quinn. If you're willing and able, please stand.
Please pray with me. We give you thanks, oh God, for this day and for your grace that is ever-present. We're grateful for our city and each person who shares of their time, energy, and talents to serve others. Deliver us, oh God, from selfish desires and remind us of your call to serve the least among us. We pray for each person, neighborhood, and organization. And we humbly ask your blessings upon them, our elected officials, and each staff member and public servant. May we all submit to your will for love, peace, and grace as we pray that you will heal our city, our nation, and our world of bitterness, hatred, and violence. As we celebrate our veterans next week, we remember all who've served, especially those who bear wounds of body, mind, or spirit, and those who've given all. We pray that you will speed the promised day when wars end and all your creation knows peace. Give us courage to seek justice, love, mercy, and walk humbly with you. We ask that you receive our prayer and abide with us in the name of all that's good, decent, and holy. Amen.
Good morning, Mr. Clerk. Could we please have our roll call?
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Smithman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tate.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Woods.
Present.
Council President Pro Tim Alexander.
Good morning, President.
Good morning. Council President O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Morning.
Council, the minutes are not ready for the September 3rd, 2024 through October 29th, 2024 meetings. At this time, we'll have communications from Mayor Whiffin. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning to the entire council. It's good to see all of you all this morning. Good morning to the public as well. Mr. President and council, as you all know, today is a very important day for our city. It's a very important day for our nation, the day where we exercise our freedom to vote. This is a privilege that we enjoy on the backs of many who fought, some who bled, and others who died. Turns out that many of those battles took place right here outside of this building. And so I just want to encourage all of you all, I want to encourage the public, and better yet, I implore the public to use our freedom today. Please vote. It's sacred. Two more notes, Mr. President and council, one being that the city of Birmingham offices, with the exception of police fire 911 and park and recreation staff working the polling sites, will close today at noon today. This is to allow employees to vote. Regular household trash will be collected today. The city of Birmingham will be closed Monday, this is next Monday, November 11th, for Veterans Day. Monday's household trash will be picked up on Tuesday, November 12th. And November 12th household waste will be picked up on Wednesday, November 13th. The Thursday route will remain unchanged. And as a note, I want to take the time to publicly thank, love, own, appreciate, and salute all of our veterans for everything they have done and continue to do for all Americans. Mr. President and council, that concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clerk, do we have any announcements for boards and agencies?
Yes, we have several vacancies with the Birmingham Waterworks Board of Ronald Mims, George Munkus, Teresa Huffman, and Larry Ward. They're four-year terms, they all expire December 31st, 2024, down the administration committee.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll read our statement on the conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the Agenda Order of Business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. At this time, could we read through our consent agenda?
The agenda starts on page two with items one, two, three, and four. Page three, items five and six are on consent. Page four, items seven, eight, and nine are on consent. Page five, items 10, 11, and 12 and 13 are on consent. Page six, items 14, 15, 16, and 17 are on consent. And we conclude with items 18, 19, 20, and 21 on page seven.
Do any members of the council wish to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? Councilor Abbott.
Yes, Mr. President, I don't really want to remove item 17, but I wanted to know what a Kenworth L-770 was with a 28-yard ASL body. Is that something for public works that's going to help us pick up trash and brush?
Mr. President, Chief Mitchell is looking it up right now to verify. Get a quick answer to your question.
Okay, thank you.
While we're waiting for that information, are there any other items that we would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Mr. President, to your colleagues' question, Ms. Abbott, it's a dump truck.
A dump truck?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, that's not as exciting as a trash and brush pickup item, but I'll take it.
On that item, we agree with you, it's not as exciting, but we are working on those as well. Those take a little while, I think you told me yesterday. We're going to order four of those.
Good.
But to build out, it can take up to 12 months minimum.
And the ones we have need more hydraulic fluid because they spill it as they go down the road.
They do?
Yeah. It's, you know, they just need to make sure they top it off after every trip, I guess.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm glad we're getting new ones, and I do not want to take item 17 off, I just wanted to know.
Okay. All right, we have no public hearing items on the agenda, so we are ready for a motion.
I'm over approval of the agenda.
All right, it's been motioned and seconded, and we're ready for the vote. All right, the consent agenda passes, and since all of the items on the agenda were on the consent agenda, it is time for our announcements. Council Clerk.
Happy Election Day. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Abbott.
Okay, first of all, I wanted to say happy birthday to Dr. Lee because today is his actual birthday. And I don't know which anniversary of his 29th birthday this is, but I'm sure he's going to have a great day. There are no neighborhood meetings scheduled this week, so there's no announcement there. And I just want to remind people, as I do every single week, that if you have concerns or problems in the city that have to do with roadways, sidewalks, gutters, ditches, you name it, call 311 and let them know because they will send someone out to work on your issue, maybe not immediately, but soon. And if you download the MyBeHam 311 app, you can include photographs of the problem, and that will be even better because it will help them to find it faster. And, Mr. President, that is all for me. I hope everyone remembers to go out and vote because it's important. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilor Smithman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Even though she's not listening, I want to say happy birthday to my niece Naomi. She's turning 21. I can't believe that, but happy birthday to her, and they won their season opener last night against Delta State. So we have a few neighborhood meetings coming up. So Oakwood Place is tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. in Harrison Park Rec Center. Today, Mason City will meet via teleconference at 4:30 p.m. Tomorrow, North Tussisville will meet at 5:00 p.m. at Memorial Park Rec Center, so that's tomorrow. And West End Manor will meet on Tuesday at 5:00 p.m. at New Hope Baptist Church. The Budget and Finance Committee will not meet on November 11th due to the observance of Veterans Day. The next Budget and Finance meeting will be on Monday, November 25th at 3:30 p.m. And then we are partnering with Sam Piper Advisory Group and the Arlington House to have a Harmony and Heritage Wellness Festival. We'll be doing Pilates, strength classes, wellness workshops, food tastings, nutritional workshops. So that will be from 9:00 to 12:00 on Saturday. And don't forget to exercise your right to vote, and I posted on my social media websites the Vote Protect Your hotline. If you have any issues, and also if you get turned away from the polls, what you can say to exercise your right. So thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Pro Tim Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President. These are announcements for District 7. As already been mentioned, we want everyone to get out and vote today. I'd like to give a special thanks to the Green Acres Neighborhood Residents, the Green Acres Middle School Band, and the Birmingham Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. We all canvassed together in the Green Acres Neighborhood on Sunday to get out the vote and encourage everyone to vote before the polls close today at 7:00 p.m. Remember, so many people sacrificed for the opportunity for those of us to be able to exercise this right. So please get out and vote. On Saturday, November 9th, we'll begin our District 7 Days of Giving, and that will kick off with our giveaway on Saturday at 9:00 a.m. at the First Baptist Church Roosevelt City, that's 6012 Malcolm Avenue. Please come out and support. And I'd like to congratulate Mr. John Wilson on his retirement as the Gracilla Heights Neighborhood Association President. Mr. Wilson has been president of that Neighborhood Association for 20 years. And so we were very excited to honor him yesterday upon his retirement. One of his major accomplishments was installing a traffic light at the corner intersection of Wilson Road and Rutledge Avenue. And I'd just like to tell you, chiefs, he was very thankful for the work that was done. It happened soon after the Mayor Whiffin took office, and so he wanted to give thanks to BDOT and other individuals who helped to spur that along. So we wish Mr. Wilson well, and we congratulate Ms. Elaine Carter, who will be the interim president. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Council Williams.
Thank you. Eastwood Neighborhood Meeting will be Thursday, November 7th at 6:30 at their regular place, Habitat. And Economic Development Tourism is canceled for today due to lack of submissions. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be November 19th. If you would have your submissions emailed to indiabailey@india.bailey@birminghamal.gov by Thursday, the 14th, we would appreciate it. And echoing everyone's sentiment, go vote.
All right, thank you. Council Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Cypico Finley Neighborhood Meeting will meet on Wednesday, November 6th at 5:30 at the Cypico Plant Community Room. North Birmingham Neighborhood Meeting will be held on next Monday, November 11th at 6:00 p.m. at the North Birmingham Rec Center. Wyllam Neighborhood has rescheduled their meeting tonight, so they'll meet next Tuesday, November 12th at 6:00 p.m. at the Wyllam Library. Thomas Neighborhood Association Meeting has been canceled. We're getting ready for the third annual State of the District, so please come out if you are constituent of District 9, join me for the State of the District on November 20th from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Crossflex in the second-floor meeting room. So exciting information will be updating the constituent base on. The next Public Safety Meeting is scheduled for November 12th at 1:00 p.m. in the council chambers. Please submit your agenda items by email by Wednesday, November 6th, no later than 12:00 noon to gregory.stanley@birminghamal.gov and patrice.collins@birminghamal.gov. Also, we're going to be partnering with Ms. Brenda Brown Buzzing Buddies for her community health forum, and that's going to be on Thursday, November 21st, at One Prep Park located at 601 Dugan Avenue. And that's from 5:30 to 6:30, so please come out and support Ms. Brenda, she does a great job. And also, we're gearing up for District 9's holiday giveaway with Gooder Pop-Up Market, and that's going to be on November 22nd from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And we'll be hosting it at the 25th Avenue Baptist Church located at 21025 Court North. If you have any questions or want to participate, just contact the staff at 254-2302. And we're going to be registering 500 participants to bless for the Thanksgiving holiday. So that's all my announcements, Mr. President. Please go out and vote, it's very important, and thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Council Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. Quickly, want to encourage everybody to get out and vote today. Saw a lot of activity at the polls this morning, and looks like we're kind of on pace for a record turnout compared to the last election. So excited about that. Apple Valley Neighborhood Association will not meet tonight, that meeting is canceled. The Spring Lake Neighborhood Association will meet on Thursday, November 7th at 6:30 p.m. That meeting is at the Huffman High School Library. The Echo Highlands Neighborhood Association will meet on Thursday, November 7th at 7:00 p.m., and that meeting is still being held via Zoom. Also, the Roebuck Neighborhood Association Meeting scheduled for Monday, November 11th is canceled. Also, would like to request a resolution of sympathy for Mr. Alan Crawford Collins over in the eastern area, passed away, and we want to, I move for a U.C.
Second.
I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Now I'd like to move a resolution of sympathy for Mr. Collins.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you. Like I said, it's out in our area, I know a lot of his family and him, and this was a great neighbor, and we're sad to lose him, sad to hear the news, and so I appreciate that resolution, so thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. The District 5 announcements are that Eastlake Neighborhood Association will not meet in November and December. Regular meetings will resume Tuesday, January 7th of 2025. Forest Park South Avondale Neighborhood Association has been rescheduled until next Tuesday, November 12th at 6:30 p.m. instead of tonight at the Avondale Library located at 50940th Street South. The Gate City Neighborhood Association will not meet in November or December. Regular meetings will resume on Monday, January 13th, 2025. The next regularly scheduled Transportation and Infrastructure Committee meeting will be held Monday, November 25th at 2:00 p.m. If you have any submissions, please contact Kimberly Phillips at kimberlyphillips@birminghamal.gov. The Firehouse Community Arts Center located at 41241st Street South in Avondale will host an open house on Tuesday, November 12th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The Firehouse is a creative learning space dedicated to the enrichment of the city's musical community that offers a variety of music education programs with scholarship opportunities for students in the community as well as a sustainable employment program for Birmingham's working musicians. The 2024 Market at Pepper Place takes place every Saturday, rain or shine, 7:00 a.m. to noon at Pepper Place located at 2829 Second Avenue South until December 14th. And should you have waited to the last minute and need nonpartisan election information, just want to remind you that Greater Birmingham Ministries has candidate profiles and other information about the election today, and you can find that at www.gbm.org. And that concludes my announcements. Mr. Clerk, Councilor Abbott.
Because I forgot it, I need to announce that the next Planning and Zoning Committee Meeting is scheduled for November 13th at 3:30 here in the council chambers. That's not the one y'all are going to be gone, is it? It is. Never mind, it'll be the one after that.
Okay.
We forgot to change it on our list, but...
Okay.
Don't come on the 13th, we won't be here.
Right.
Because we won't have a quorum, and one of us doesn't want to come to announce that.
Right.
Thank you.
Council Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Norwood Elementary Teaching Farm will have a ribbon cutting on Wednesday, November 6th at 9:00 a.m. So really excited about them being able to open up their teaching farm. Friday, November 8th, Veterans Day Outdoor Wellness Event will take place at Eastlake Park from 9:00 to 11:30 a.m. Please join the Birmingham VA Healthcare System Whole Health and Wellness Veterans Day Outdoor Wellness Event at Eastlake Park on Friday, November 8th from 9:00 a.m. to 11:30. Like I said, located at Eastlake Park. Help plant trees at the Veterans Memorial Grove around the lake and walking track in Eastlake Park. All gloves and needed tools will be provided, long pants and closed-toe shoes recommended for this activity. Saturday, November 9th, my office will be in partnership with the Collegeville Neighborhood Association and Cool Green Trees, and we will also be planting trees over at Hudson K through 8 from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Volunteers are welcome, we'll be honoring veterans in the community as well. Today's community development meeting is, of course, canceled for lack of submission. The next Community Development Committee meeting will take place on November 19th. All submissions are due to terry.chapman@birminghamal.gov by Friday, November 15th. And the Park and Recreation Board Meeting will take place tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. at Legion Field, at Legion Field. So please do show up if you plan on attending. Lastly, just want to say, one of my favorite books is, you know, As a Man Thinketh. And there's a quote in the book that says, you know, "Circumstances do not make the man, but they reveal him to himself." And although I am not, you know, proud of the incidents that took place this past weekend, I am, you know, proud to say that, you know, I have shown up today to take responsibility and accountability for my actions. And so want to say, you know, to my colleagues on the council, my family, District 4, and the city of Birmingham, truly do apologize and pray for your forgiveness in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Moore. Mr. Clerk, could we proceed with our public speakers, please?
Grace Myers. Grace Myers. And, oh, William R. Mahoney.
Ms. Myers? Yes. Please come to the lectern and... As you come up, please remember to state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Your time will be displayed on the monitors behind us.
I have these to pass out. Testing.
Yes, ma'am, please go ahead.
Oh, okay. Say my name and my address, did you say?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Grace Myers. I'm in District 6. My address is 2021 10th Avenue South. Okay. I kind of wanted you to look at that while I was discussing what I wanted to say.
Yeah, there you go.
I'm a newbie, so... Okay. All right. This is like my first time ever speaking publicly. First of all, I want to thank you for your service and dedication and leadership as you serve our city in conjunction with our country. Thank you. Actually, I have a much more urgent concern to speak on, but today I just call this an introduction. Before you is an illustration I created in regards to our 2024 election. It's somewhat a sidebar of what I would like to discuss at another time. My aim was to visually promote peace, unity, and cooperation, no matter who loses or who wins. It takes all of America to work together as one to really produce the kind of country we long to see, where citizens can be free and they can also be what they want to be. In that way, we are all winners, for we are the United States of America. In 1925, Catherine Lee Bates wrote "America the Beautiful." It became center music before the patriot anthem we all know and love. "Oh, beautiful, for spacious skies, for amber waves of grain, for purple mountains majesty above the fruited plains. America, America, God shed his grace on thee and crown thy good with brotherhood from sea to shiny sea. Oh, beautiful, for pilgrims feet, whose stern in passion stress a thorough fair for freedom beat across the wilderness. America, America, God mend thou every..." America, America, God mend thou every flaw, confirm their soul in self-control, thou liberty in law. Oh, beautiful, for heroes proved in liberating strife, who more than self, their country love, and mercy more than life. America, America, may God thy gold refine, till all success be nobleness in every gain divine. Oh, beautiful, for patriot's dream, that sees beyond the years, thou Alabaster City gleam, undimmed by human tears. America, America, God shed His grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood from sea to shiny sea. Keep America peaceful. Keep America strong." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Mr. Muhammad?
My name is William Muhammad, 411 Lorance Street. I am kind of conflicted about speaking on the subject I want to speak on today, and when I came by the desk and saw that it was all consent and genuine, I felt like that was a message from God, that I should say what's on my mind. I went to a public hearing at the Waterworks last night, and it was one of the most frustrating events I've ever seen because it's a public hearing where you don't hear from the public. You make it hard for the public to get there. You tell them, you read a statement telling them that you're not going to answer any questions they have. It was so frustrating that the last person who spoke was Commissioner Sheila Tyson. She called me on the way home, and she called me complaining that these people keep calling me about these things, and they won't answer any questions. So my idea was, Sheila, let's have a real public hearing, a public hearing where we can answer people's questions and invite them to come so that the general manager or the deputy general manager, whoever else over there getting contracts, can answer some of the public's questions. I talked to them about two kind of budgets, a pop-up budget, which is my father-in-law, and a BS budget, which is what they gave us last night. My father-in-law used to say that it's two things you could do, make money or spend less. He said, "Son, which one should you do?" And I answered the question, and he said, "You got to do both." And that's what I wanted to say to the Waterworks. There's been a decrease in consumption in the last 20 years. People are using less water. We got implements, we got machinery, washers, dryers, toilets that use less water. So every year, they raise the budget, they raise the rates because they feel like, well, people are not using much water, so we're going to raise the rates. Well, it's another way that you can keep the rates down, and that's by not spending that much money over there. The capital budget increased from $83 million to $100 million. Nobody ever talks about how much of that money is spent. That's one of the things I saw when I was over there. They don't spend that capital budget. They were trying to teach me that it's better off not being spent than not having it, but I never could get that. I ain't got there yet. I'm still trying to learn that. But they put in there $10 million for AMI. AMI is... Will solve the problem. AMI will solve the meter reading problem. But as I remember, and I'm just estimating, AMI meter, automatic meter, digital meter, costs $500. If... I'm just estimating between $350 and $500. So if you put $10 million in there, I did math, and I did flunk math in college. I had to copy all my wife's paper in order to pass the math, and it was remedial math at that. But $500 per meter, I divided that, that ain't but 20,000 meters. How many customers did the Birmingham Waterworks have? 300,000, 400,000? So you're talking about buying 20,000 meters for $10 million, and that ain't even talking about the infrastructure that go with the meters. So... And I just wanted to say this to you, that don't appoint anybody to the Waterworks Board if you are not going to be vigilant. This is the part I was conflicted by saying. Don't appoint anybody to the Waterworks if y'all ain't going to be vigilant about what's happening over there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muhammad. Next speaker, please. We've got one more. Jackie Gordon?
I don't have her on my list.
All right. Okay, well, we'll move on then. Want to thank our officers on duty. This morning, we have three officers from West Precinct, Officer Williams, Officer Jones, and Officer Dixon. Thank you very much for being with us. We appreciate you. And that brings us... Hang on a second. Counselor Woods?
Yeah, real quick. I mean, I did want to just say to my colleague, man, I know it took a lot to show up this morning, man, and appreciate just seeing you, man. I know, you know, I've worked with you, know your character, man, and know, you know, what you represent, and, you know, at the end of the day, you know, our mistakes, our failures are not the end of the road. It's a bend in the road, and I know that you'll do the work, you know, to kind of go forward and just, you know, just support you, JT the person, so...
All right. All in favor?